We're gonna go ahead and start our city council meeting of April 9th, 2015. We appreciate y'all for being here. Hope everybody had a happy and blessed Easter. Tonight, we're glad to have the prayer and pledge to be led by my friend Pastor Mark Benson, Senior Pastor, Grace Creek Church. Would you please stand?
Let's bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity tonight to come and discuss the business of our incredible city in Longview. And Lord, I pray you give us sharp minds tonight as we discuss that. Lord, I just pray your blessing and your favor continuing on the city and on all the people that serve it continuously. Bless our police force, the people that serve our nation here in East Texas as well. Lord God, we love you. We bless you in Jesus' name. Everybody say it.
Amen.
Amen. Let's do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Pastor, thank you so much. Good seeing you. Okay. First item, citizen comment. I have a speaker card, Deidra Beckworth.
Once a child seemed like a teenager forever, then when I was grown, things turned and surely I thought I was going to fall. While I thought I would never be here fighting for justice, wanting to be heard halfway homeless, it was all preparing me for what was next. When everything in your life stops and you don't know what to do, you do something different. What motivates you? What drives you? A new car, a new house, a new job? It's important to be active in your community, to reach others around you and keep connected smoothly and effectively. Everything, everyone's ready for a radical change to happen. Do your failures and disappointments motivate you? What pushes and persuades you to move to the next level in life? Mr. Mayor, I've been trying to find a job that I enjoy.
We wish, we wish that will happen for you too. And the thing we have to do today is not give up and not stop and understand that, you know, people in the community are very giving and loving and you continue to work hard and hopefully that dream will come true, okay?
All right.
Thank you so much for being here.
I want to believe that. I really do.
Thank you for coming. God bless you. Okay, Mr. Vic Verma.
Thank you, Mayor Dean.
Did you bring all this rain, Vic?
It's not my fault, Mr. Mayor. It's really not. Not this time anyway. Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council. I just am here briefly to announce an event that we're gonna have next Tuesday evening. Organizing for Action is gonna have an event on immigration executive orders that have been issued by President Obama and that are currently in the courts. Jose Sanchez, who I know many of us know, who's an immigration attorney here in Longview, will be giving the presentation. We're hoping to have a really large crowd for the event to learn more and it's an educational event. We're really grateful to Darryl Atkinson, Mike Lewis, and Rod Scott, local attorneys who are sponsoring the event for us, they've been big supporters. We encourage folks to come out. It's at April 14th, 6:30, Longview Community Center on East Whaley Street. So there's a little bit of construction in front, but it's easy to get in on the side. So I have flyers for people who are interested, so I'll be here for the meeting, so, right there. That's all I have.
Thanks, Vic. Appreciate it. Okay, that's all the speaker cards I have. The other speaker cards are regards to some of the zoning issues, so we'll move to item five, animal shelter items. A, consider resolution directing the Longview Animal Shelter and Adoption Center to be operated by the City of Longview. Ms. Madlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, I bring to you tonight a resolution that we affirm that our city run our animal shelter. I think it was a foregone conclusion to all of us up here that once we deliberated as to what the options were with regard to operating an animal shelter, that we came to the conclusion it would be the city. However, over the course of the last few weeks and working around town for several reasons, I've come across a few people that were, though small a number, they were very vocal, that they were concerned that a future council might in fact rescind our intention. So this is twofold, that it gives a statement to those folks that formally we say that we intend for the animal shelter to be run by the city and also it sets, while not a legal precedent, I'm sure our attorney would say not a legal precedent, I think it sets a historical precedent for any future councils, that this was the intent that we had when we passed this resolution today. So I offer that up to everyone and would strongly urge everyone to vote to approve this and we do it unanimously.
Okay. Anybody have any comments, questions? Okay, may I have a motion?
Don't move.
Have a motion? Second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Item B, consider a resolution accepting a gift from the estate of owner Joe Simpson for the Longview Animal Shelter and Adoption Center in the amount of $293,562.09 and directing that the adoption lobby of said building be named in honor of owner Joe Simpson. Would y'all come forward? Mr. Simpson?
Okay. You all come up to the dais here. On behalf of the owner Joe Simpson family, we are excited, we're humbled on behalf of the Longview citizens of Longview, the Longview City Council to accept this very generous donation. I can assure you that when we first heard what the final number was gonna be, there was quite a bit of jubilation from everybody that was contacted about this, so we wanna say from the bottom of our heart, thank you. You know, this is very important, you know, to go toward the construction of the new facility and to go toward enhancements. And I know that it was owner Joe's request that she be, I mean, she enjoyed the adoption part of the whole process and so it's only fitting that the actual adoption lobby will be named and prominently displayed in her honor, in the honor of your family. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I won't keep y'all, I know it's raining and I'm driving home to Arlington tonight, but I can't tell you how much this would've meant to my aunt. And the one thing that I wanna tell y'all how remarkable she was is that she and my dad were raised in poverty and she raised herself up from East Texas, put herself through school in Dallas, and came back to East Texas to work where she retired as a secretary. So she grew up in the Depression, she died at the ripe young age of 100, and so you can imagine what this would mean to her, to be a secretary, to retire as a secretary and to give this to animals. And she loved nothing more in life than animals and she adopted many, many, many animals from East Texas and this would be the culmination of her life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you so much. And I wanna do thank Greg Wright, the attorney, for, you know, for the estate, for all the great work you did and we sure appreciate your help. Thank you very much.
Finally, after seven years.
Hey, good things take a while.
Yeah, it does.
Okay. The next item is just to discuss and update, you know, people regarding the animal shelter and adoption center. And, you know, one thing following on what Gigi talked about just now, about her mother or her aunt and the animals and whatnot, you know, I've had some contact from various people regards, you know, about what we're spending on this facility and while we have people that are homeless and, you know, the mentally ill, et cetera, and there's not anybody up here that have any compassion for those folks. This city receives hundreds of thousands of dollars annually from the federal government that goes toward homeless, the less fortunate, also for the mental health issues. Unfortunately, animals don't have that type of support and I think many of the people in our community felt like this was the right thing for us to be doing and that's exactly why we're doing it. What I wanna do is to bring you, oh, excuse me, okay. All right, we'll need to, let me back up. We're gonna need to take a vote on item B, accepting the gift from the estate of owner Joe Simpson. I have a motion, second, on favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Now, we'd like to just, just to kinda give an update on the shelter fundraising with the $292,000 plus thousand that we received today, which will be, go toward the naming of the adoption lobby. We've also received $100,000 for the Spaya Nuda Clinic. We received a $50,000 donation for the exercise yard, a $10,000 donation for the dog display, $148,000 for pets and various donors, $100,000 for the education room, and a $300,000 gift for the naming rights. So ladies and gentlemen, I'm proud to say tonight, we've received a million dollars, both in cash and commitments at this point. One thing we wanna be clear about is we intend at the next meeting to bring forth the names of the different people that actually do the donation because of some of the legal work, et cetera, that they're trying to do, we didn't have all of that at this time, but we plan to have that as well as the actual naming of the facility at our next meeting. Last week, you know, I'll thank, of course, everybody that's done, and let me just say this, we are still accepting donations, there's still plenty to do. You know, one of the things we were scared about putting this out there was people that might be sitting on the fence, say, "Oh, well, they don't need our money." We do, okay? I mean, everything that's collected through this fundraising will go toward the construction enhancement and hopefully towards some of the operational issues that we're gonna have with the shelter. So please, continue to consider, you know, donating to the facility. We will continue to try to raise funds going forward. Fundraising will be an important part of the facility, you know, on a constant basis, so we ask people to continue to think about contributing to the fund, to the shelter. Last week, beginning of the week, we actually were able to go to a animal care expo, a number of people, and you can see their happy faces right here, but to actually go and learn more about, you know, running animal shelters and some of the various issues that are associated with it. The next page, you see another happy group with a life-size, large-size dog, you know? But, but some of the things that, you know, the main thing we were trying to do was to really learn, you know, what the whole process was like. And in some of the various workshops, know before you build, obviously, when people look at what the cost of the animal shelter is, their first reaction is, wow. But then when you start getting into how the shelter is designed from a maintenance perspective and to properly take care of the animals and to be a work-friendly environment along with all the educational facilities inside the shelter, it was important to go through and see and hear from other folks, how to place animals. You know, what's very important and what we learned, what we knew going into this was the way that you reduce the euthanization of some of these animals is to be able to have an adoption, a really aggressive proactive adoption program so we can place these animals in the future. Legislating responsibility, adoption ambassadors. One thing about locally, there are a number of people that are currently working with the Humane Society, a number of groups that actually do adoption, so they've already started, have been working on adoptions in this area. You know, mastering the art of intake, I think that's a very important part. You know, one of the issues we have, I met the executive director for Seattle, Washington, the city of 600,000 people, they take in 5,000 animals per year. Longview at 80,000 with the surrounding area, we take in 7,000. So the education processes helped them reduce the number, you know, changing the culture, but also the intake of these animals, you know? People showing up with a big basket full of puppies, you know, come on. I mean, you know, we're gonna have to really look at some of the various parts of the ordinances that we have because if it's just gonna be a general intake, it's gonna be very difficult. So we've gotta set in place, I should say, council should set in place, you know, some teeth into some ordinances to make sure that that doesn't happen. Understanding capacity of care, contracting for success, targeting TNR, understanding capacity for pets for life. So the main thing was to try to also, you know, figure out how to maximize the adoptions, not to overload the shelter, which causes the animals to get distressed, the pets for life philosophy of inclusion, non-judgment, and meeting people where they are enabled animal care professionals to better serve their communities, trap Nuda and release programs, which is a very important part of the services that the shelter would provide for better success. On and on and on again, the main idea was the group went down to learn more about running the type of shelter that's being proposed, from the adoption perspective to making sure that the animals are healthy. And then to network, one of the main objectives is to find the right executive director for the facility so that person can get started right away overseeing the construction, working with council, working with staff to create the kind of ordinances that have to be put into place, you know, working with the volunteers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the point of the trip was to try to learn more about, you know, the various aspects of running a shelter. And I think staff would tell you that they attended a lot of, I attended two of them, but they attended a lot of these workshops and came away with a much better feeling of some of the things that they're gonna be dealing with once the shelter's built. Mr. Alan Mazaia, and would you like to add something to that?
Yes, sir. It was very informative and one thing I'd like to mention up front, those of us who were not city employees, we would be, I think there was four, including the mayor, we paid our own expenses. So I think the city paid our registration, but we paid all the rest of it. Just wanted to mention that up front. But the program is very good. One thing that, I went to three different seminars, the two I really enjoyed were on adoption and the procedures. There's all kinds of different ideas that you can work with out there on adopting animals. One adoption center in East Los Angeles actually worked up a program where they went door to door, knocking on residents, asking if they'd ever thought about adopting a pet. And surprisingly, their euthanasia rate dropped down to less than 5%. So there's all kinds of different programs out there that are available that we can learn and work with.
Okay. Thank you, city. Okay. Any other comments or questions about? Mr. Gary, look, you got something on your mind.
Mr. Mayor, do we also take corporate donations from local companies here in Longview such as?
We absolutely, to my knowledge legally, we can.
So we're still casting?
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna encourage some of our corporate partners here in Longview to also step up and donate to this cause. I think, in my own personal opinion also, I think this is a good move for the City of Longview because we had outgrown that other shelter and we needed something new and it was, time was now to do it.
You know, Gary, I appreciate that and there are a number of naming opportunities remaining, you know, on the list. So, I mean, there's opportunity and, you know, I think, I mean, I'm proud of the people that stepped forward already to donate, but I believe going forward that you'll see more people, especially the corporate people, come in and plan. You know, one of the things we found at this conference was how some of the manufacturers of animal health supplies, equipment partner with, I mean, right now, we've all heard about Mike Arms and his facility out in San Diego, there's an equal facility up in Long Island, New York. Then there's, you know, there's a couple of others, but they have such a demand for their animals. Like at Christmas time, the San Diego facility can't get puppies, they can't keep puppies. Matter of fact, I think they discussed with us that once the shelter was up and running, they'd take every healthy puppy we had for adoption. And just on a sidebar, they get $415 for every puppy that they sell at that time.
That is amazing.
So it's, it's, it's a, there's a lot of ways that this could be a win-win for the entire process, so we just have to keep working it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, let's move to the presentation item, presentation of a proclamation commemorating April as Autism Awareness Month. Let's see, I have Ms. Autism, what did I say?
Austin.
Almost got that. Got me all worked up over here. Ms. Anitra Allison Anderson, please come forward. I'll get it right on this, so I promise.
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Well, I was doing good until I got the, Austin, I was. The rain doing it to me? Well, thank you, I appreciate that. National Autism Awareness Month, April 2015. April is recognized as National Autism Awareness Month and April 11th will be celebrated as Family Fun Day for Autism Awareness. This is a time to recognize families and friends who suffer from this disorder. Positive People with Positive Attitudes is an organization which focuses on building healthy relationships within the community. Our purpose is to bring unity, direction, and educate people to make a difference. The community is encouraged to join in the events on April 11th to help lead efforts to ensure that everyone has a right to live in conditions of opportunity, peace, dignity, and mutual respect. Now therefore, I, Jay Dean, by the authority vested in me, is Mayor of the City of Longview, do hereby proclaim April as National Autism Month and April 11th as Family Fun Day for Autism Awareness in Longview. Thank you very much.
Do you want to say anything? Michelle?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I have a couple of items that Councilman Smith would like to pull for separate consideration. Item B, item D, is there any other item that council would like to pull for separate consideration?
Well, I was 15 minutes late tonight because I lost my iPad temporarily, but I will find it tomorrow. Which item has to do with personnel?
B.
B, okay, that's one I would like.
B and D.
B for boy. Personnel, I'd like to discuss that separately.
B and D. Okay. All right. Well, why don't we go ahead and, let's see, item B would be Angela Choi. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, golly. Let me go back up to, item B is gonna be Mary Ann Miller. Angela, I'm sorry. She got, man, this thing is, I gotta get some bigger, bigger, I like, thank you. No, bigger print. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary Ann. We're up here trying to figure out how to use this.
Ms. Miller, I was looking over my consent agenda for the last couple of days and I was looking through some of the personnel policies and procedure changes and you got, I think, the top five items on your list that I still needed some, a little bit more information on. Can you help me with that, such as vacation time?
Sure. The policies and procedures that are sitting before you tonight are the culmination of a year-long comprehensive review by a cross-departmental team made up of the Assistant City Manager, the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, the Director of Finance, myself, and the Assistant City Attorney. And we reviewed every policy over the course of that year and its relationship to the city and the way our organization works. The changes before you are all a result of that. Most of them are not substantive in nature. This comprehensive review really hadn't been done since 2011. There was a small review in 2012, a few policies were brought to council at that point, but the entire book really hasn't been reviewed since 2011. So there were some changes that needed to be made to come in line with state and federal law. Also, there were some changes that we felt like we just needed to clarify. There were some policies that needed clearing up with questions we had received from employees throughout the years. So that is the majority of the changes that are before you. There are a few that are substantive. For instance, the travel policy, that is a complete rewrite. Basically, the biggest change in the travel policy is we are asking city staff to only use per diem. In the old policy, there were several different ways that you could pay for your meals and that resulted in a laborious amount of time on finance departments and to reconcile the travel expense reports with a lot of receipts. So we followed, you know, the policy that you all already have for per diem and have done that. We are bringing back the language pay policy that was never abandoned totally by the city, but it was taken out of the policies in 2012. I think at that time, it was thought that it would be easier to administer the policy if it was removed and made a separate process, but we have since determined that it needed to be put back in because it became a little difficult to administer. We are asking to increase the pay that we give to those folks who are bilingual because we feel like it's a customer service enhancement and it had not been increased since it was put into place in 2003. The full-time rate went into place and then in 2006, the part-time rate went into place. So we felt like we needed to increase that. We also are expanding it, so if a department feels like they need another language skill besides Spanish speaking and they have an employee in their department that can pass the test to get that certification pay, then they would be able to receive it. It's no longer just for Spanish speaking. Again, we feel like that's a customer service enhancement. We are asking that e-cigarettes be banned in city buildings and city vehicles following the tobacco policy that is already in place, the cigarette policy. And then the last big change is vacation accruals. We are asking city council to increase vacation accruals for some of our employees. Currently, the vacation accrual policy is split into three categories depending upon your years of service. So from zero to five years of service, there is a rate, then five to 15 years of service, there is a rate, and then 15 years and beyond, there is a rate. Zero to five additionally is broken down into general government and then police and fire. So a general government employee who has worked here for zero to five years brings in two weeks of vacation. in two weeks of vacation a year. Police and fire, who have worked here for zero to five years, gets three weeks of vacation a year. When you move to five to 15 years of service, both general government and police and fire get three weeks of vacation a year, which means that police and fire, from the time they walk in the door until they hit 15 years, they don't get an increase in their vacation accrual. Both police and fire and general government move to four weeks at 15 years and beyond. We are not asking to change that. We are also not asking to change the max vacation hours that employees get. What we are asking is to move the general government employees from two weeks to three weeks to match police and fire for zero to five years and then move both general government and police and fire from five to 15 years up from three weeks to effectively three weeks and two days. It's a little different for fire, but then we would leave it the same at 15 years at four weeks. The policy committee looked at this and we really felt like it was a customer service, I'm sorry, a retention and retainment tool and recruitment tool as well. It has been a policy that has been discussed in policy committees for the last six years. This is the first time that it has been brought to council, but additionally, the policy went into effect in 1983 and has not really been assessed by council since that time. So, the policy committee felt like it was a good time to bring this forward. We felt like it was an inexpensive way to retain and recruit employees because it would not increase the budget numbers that we bring to the city council.
So, of the, excuse me, so of the different levels you pointed out, as far as the accrual goes, what group would actually see the benefit of the accrual? Is it the zero to five-year employees?
Zero to five, general government would see a benefit.
General government, such as?
Anything except police and fire, anything except your public safety. That's what we're terming general government. So, zero to five, general government would see an increase in their vacation accrual and then general government and police and fire would see an increase five to 15 years.
And as I looked at this, it didn't appear that there was a great amount of additional funding required by the city or there was no additional funding required by the city?
It would not increase the city's budget numbers. It is an indirect cost in that people would be, would get more vacation time, so they would be out of the office if they chose to take it, but it's not a cost, a direct cost to the city's bottom line. We just feel like it would be an additional benefit.
Isn't there still an accrual on the amount, like, you can accumulate at a certain point? Is there, in there, capped there? I forgot exactly what it is.
There is, 320 hours. We're not asking to change that.
Yes, sir. Can folks who accrue hours sell them back to the city, like some businesses do?
No, sir.
They can't do, they have to use it or lose it.
Yes, well, and once they separate, that's when it turns into, right.
But again, nothing beyond 320?
No, nothing beyond 320.
Okay, Gary?
So, Ms. Miller, if I'm employed here for 48 months, are you saying that I can get three weeks vacation, is that what you're saying? Only two weeks?
Currently, if you work in police and fire, you get three weeks in 48 months. If you work in any other department, you get two weeks.
It'll be two weeks.
But we are asking to go up to three weeks to match police and fire.
Okay, all right, okay.
Ms. Allen?
Yes, ma'am. Don't worry, this is not a roast of Mary Ann tonight.
It's all right.
All right. One thing, you've mentioned several times, zero to five years. Now, would you be talking about 12 months to five years? I mean, you don't get vacation the first day you start, don't you have to work here for a period of time?
You do, you begin to accrue, but you don't get to take any vacation until you are past your probationary period, which is six months.
Oh, six months, so after six months, how much vacation time do you get after six months?
You've accrued it since day one, so you would have 10, well, we're asking to go to 10 hours a month, so at the end of six months, you would have 60 hours.
Okay, which would be 65 times.
Five days.
A week.
Seven workdays plus a long.
So, after, okay, well, I thought it was a year, so after you've been here six months, you get how many days vacation?
Well, we're asking to go to 10 hours a month, which would be, which would.
60.
60, thank you, 60. We're asking to go to 10 hours a month, so at that point, you would have 60 hours.
Eight times, that's seven, that's over seven and a half full of days.
Yes, sir.
So, it's 15 a year. Three weeks would be 15 workdays.
Okay, that's, three weeks would be, okay, after a year, you'll have.
120.
120 hours is what you would have in a year.
So, how many, eight?
John, that's somebody calling about the rain.
You would have.
I think it scared it worse than.
Okay, you'd have three, you'd have 15 days, which would be three weeks.
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is the only problem I have is the going in upfront. In other words, if you've been here one year, you've got three weeks vacation and also then you've got with holidays, you've got about 10 holidays, paid holidays, so you could actually get to the effect within one year where you could be off for five weeks paid. I think that's correct, the way we looked at it?
It is.
All right, so if you've got a department that's got 10 people in it, you're gonna have one person gone all year and you're gonna have to have somebody filling in for that person. You know, it just, I don't know of any business that I know of that gives three weeks vacation after the first year. I think that's, I think that's a little excessive. Now, I've got two purposes here. This, I may be saying that's excessive, but also what we offer as an employer, I think, is way above what normal private enterprise offers out there in the effect that on the retirement, I think I'm correct, that the employee can put in 7% of his salary, is that correct?
The employee puts in seven, yes, sir.
And then the city will put in 14%, so we double. So, in effect, if the employee putting in seven, the city putting in 14, they can put in 21% toward their retirement, which is a great, a great program there. And then with three weeks sick leave, I just.
Three weeks sick leave?
Three weeks vacation.
Vacation, okay.
Excuse me, yeah, yeah, three weeks vacation. I just have a little problem with accelerating that fast starting off. It's just, make sure I haven't, it just, it just concerns me, the time off and having to have extra people there to fill in for people that are not on the job. That's my main concern.
Okay. Any other questions about that item? So, it sounds like what we'll need to do is we'll vote, well, let me do one other thing. Gary, you had something on item D.
Item D.
So, let's do that, approving a lease agreement, BNSF, Keith Bonds?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Mr. Bonds, I'm trying to find out where this parking lot is. I know there is a parking lot to the east of the transit system now.
Yes, sir.
But I can't identify, I went down there today to try to identify, where is this parking lot located?
It's immediately south of the existing transit facility. There is a spur of the BNSF railroad behind and their right-of-way or their property abuts right to the back of the building.
Okay.
And to be truthful, we've been kind of driving back there for many, many years and we need to pave it because of the new larger buses and so they said, well, we'll be glad to lease it to you and then you can pave it.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
That's all I got, Ms. Miller, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Simmons?
I don't have anything from Mr. Bonds, but I fully intend to vote for yes for this tonight simply because I have no problem with vacation, but they were so forward-looking as a group on e-cigarettes. Nicotine is nicotine any way you inhale it and as a man with COPD, I wish to God I would have had a group help me back in the 30s, 40s, and 50s so that I wouldn't be going through what I am now. So, thank you all very, very much.
Okay, so, let's go ahead and we'll vote on item B to begin with and we'll come back to the rest of the items on the agenda, okay? So, may I have a motion, item B?
So moved.
Have a motion, second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion passes. Now, we'll take a motion, items A, C, and D.
Move to approve.
I have a motion, second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion passes, okay. Zoning items, public hearing to consider, application Z1506. Ah ha, that's Ms. Angela Cho.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council, and Mr. Willard.
I'm gonna say that I can read this a whole lot better.
Yes, sir.
Just him and, go ahead, Angela.
Okay, the public hearing is to hear, the applicant is requesting a rezone from single family to parking to allow for the expansion of a parking lot. Due to the adjacency to residential, a 10-foot wide buffer is required between residential and this property. It appears that the contractor at that time during the project built the parking lot into the buffer area approximately four to six feet and so staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent and recommends approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? Let's see, if not this item requires a public hearing, public hearing is now open. Let's see, B, B, I don't have any speaker cards. Anyone here like to speak to that item? Item A. If not, public hearing is closed, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Man, the gum weather's got y'all on. Okay, item B, consider application PD1503. Ms. Cho.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to amend PD0503, which is a single-family detached subdivision, to allow for a realignment and layout change of a future streets in the subdivision. The proposed layout would be, would change the street layout to the southeast portion of this development along here. The minimum lot dimensions, setbacks, floor area will remain the same. Through the subdivision process, the development will be expected to meet all of the City of Longview's subdivision requirements. Planning and zoning commission and city, planning and zoning commission and staff recommend approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? If not, this item requires a public hearing. I have Joe Hart here, I'm assuming, Joe, you're here to answer questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions to Mr. Hart? Okay, I do have a card from Eddie Mason. Would you like to speak to this matter? Yes, sir.
That's 1,009 Delia and y'all fixing to put some more houses back there. Are they gonna do anything for flood control, you want water coming off the hill on my property?
Ms. Cho.
Yes, yes, sir. Through the development process, our city engineer will look at this to determine drainage control. There are some, if we go back, there is a proposed detention pond right here, which they will be installing and there's also an existing pond here, but through the development process, our city. Yes, sir, you're on Delia, which I think is along this side. Yes, sir. Through our development process, our city engineer will make sure that drainage is properly handled.
And they gonna put a privacy fence up there or the property owner?
I'm not sure about that. We could ask the city engineer or the engineer for.
Yeah, we have Mr. Hart here.
Yes.
Joe?
Mission Creek used to own it, a property line back there. They used to keep the trees cut and I got trees growing on my property about 20 feet over, just killing my grass and everything. Who does he about that?
We could, we could ask the developer, yes, sir.
Right, that's all I got.
Okay, Mr. Hart could maybe visit with you about that? Yes, go ahead.
And also, Mr. Hart, in the absence of Councilwoman Kristen Ishihara, she has already met with some of the citizens in that area in regard to controlling the flooding and she will be facilitating a meeting upon her return because she's out of town on business and she did make council aware of that. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I do not, yes, go ahead.
Angela, also, you might invite him to come to your Thursday morning meetings as you're talking with developers, if that's gonna be.
Yes, sir, most certainly. You can, you are more than welcome to come when they, when we meet with Mr. Hart and the developer.
Okay, I don't know if that'll do you a whole lot of good about the tree hanging over your property, but, you know, the city can intervene, but if it's, you know, one private property owner's tree leaning over another private property, we gotta figure out how to do that. But anyway, but we'll get you two guys together and have a better understanding, but you're right, Kristen did send all of us a note that she had met with several of the property owners and they plan to have a meeting to discuss, I think, traffic as well. So, anyway, okay, I do not have any other speaker cards. Anybody else like to speak to this matter? Okay, I have to, public hearing is closed. I have one motion, second in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Item C, to consider ordinance M15-01.
Thank you. Staff has amended Article 26 of the zoning ordinance to allow for the exemption of permit fees associated with construction, rehabilitation, zoning, variance, plating, and TAPS. Designated local historic landmarks are eligible for this incentive and they must first obtain a certificate of appropriateness from the Longview Historic Preservation Commission when necessary. The Comprehensive Plan states that historic preservation should be a focus as Longview seeks to be recognized as a most livable city in East Texas. One of the goals and objectives within the Comprehensive Plan is to build on Longview's historic significance and heritage by encouraging the adoption of development standards, zoning, and financial incentives. Creating incentives is one of the many tools used to help balance preservation of the city's historic character with the promotion of development. Planning and zoning commission, Historic Preservation Commission, and staff recommends approval of this amendment. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Could you clarify certificate of appropriateness?
Yes, ma'am. When work is done on a structure, for example, the Rucker Campbell House, which is a locally designated structure. When work is done on it, they pull a building permit, because it is a locally designated structure, it needs to, they need to apply for a certificate of appropriateness to ensure that what the work they're doing is appropriate for that structure. And so, once the Historic Preservation Commission, whether they approve or deny that certificate, hopefully approve the certificate, then they, then their building permit will be processed.
Are there time constraints? And I'm asking those questions because that, we have a lot of historic buildings in my district specifically and so I'm concerned about that and some of those perhaps could be rehabbed. So, are there time constraints there, you know, when people decide, you know, I'd like to pursue this property or once they receive the certificate of appropriateness, they can proceed and it could last, you know, indefinitely almost?
Well, the application, they apply for the certificate of appropriateness approximately a month in advance and then the Historic Preservation Commission must hold a public hearing on the matter and once they, once they approve or deny it, then hopefully their building permit has been submitted by that time and then it just goes through the natural process.
So, they have to have all their ducks in a row basically?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good, thank you.
Lovely.
Any other questions? Okay, public hearing is now closed, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, second in favor, all say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Items of community interest, 30s and 40s? You were smoking cigarettes back then?
I was in the 40s.
Oh, you said the 30s and the 40s, I go, good lord, I didn't think you smoked it when you were six years old.
You don't know how old I am.
Well, I can tell you.
I may be lying about my age.
I'm just adding up, I'm being shoot there. What's up, Mr. Simmons?
Well, I guess you all can tell by the smile on my face, this has been a long road and Jay and I have traveled it together and I want to thank him so much for making this animal shelter a reality. During my lifetime, I've had a job that I traveled extensively and lived in my, until I moved to Longview, I had lived in 22 different cities. I moved to Longview, I had lived in 22 different cities. And of course, that was half of my life. Now, this second half has been here in Longview. Every city I lived in had an animal shelter. Back, back in the early years, we called them dog parks. But it was a facility to take care of animals. I couldn't understand why Longview never had one. And now we do, and I am so thankful for it. Our furry friends are going to get the break they deserve. So thank you a lot.
Well, John, you, you have, you've been right there. I mean, you never wavered. I mean, he was about as passionate as any of the other passionate people, that's for sure. So good job.
Some of them, I wasn't quite as passionate.
You were pretty passionate. Okay, thanks a lot for your help. Gary?
I've been doing some extensive traveling in over the last month or so.
Where you been?
Down southeast Texas. Have you heard of this place called, I guess, the restaurant and outlet, Bucky's? I guess it's got like a beaver.
Yeah, yeah. Got one going up over at Terrell.
Yeah, I got one going in Terrell. And I also got one down in Baytown that's huge. I was talking to some investors down in that area, and I asked them to come to Longview and look at I-20 Eastman Road area. And I knew we got one in Terrell, but this was kind of in between.
Sure.
And, and they said they would be interested in coming and taking a look.
Well, good deal.
But that's a very interesting project.
That one that's going up at Terrell, I mean, it's probably seven, eight to 10 acres.
Yeah, they need about eight acres.
Yeah, yeah, it's big.
And then, you know, I was still on my travels, so I went down to Houston. And I remember a couple of years ago that we was talking about maybe a semi-pro baseball field here. So I got a chance to talk to some investors up there about, again, relocating interstate 286th Road because of the access. And so they seemed to be pretty interested in that. And they took a look at this area, and it seemed to be going well. And last, number three, you did a great speech out at the, at the rodeo today, rodeo center. They had a great speech out there today. So I guess you'll talk to them about that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Ms. Kasha?
A few pictures. The very first one at the top is myself and Pastor Gloria Lewis of New Beginnings Church. They, and on the far left, where they were feeding the homeless, outright homeless. That is real ministry at work. And so I want to give them a huge shout out. I was glad to have been there. On the bottom right-hand side, you will see participants, specifically Mr. Zaret Cannon, who put together the prayer vigil that was held at Broughton from Bethel Temple to Broughton last Saturday. I see Kevin Hawkins is out in the audience this evening. He was also instrumental in facilitating this program, and it was really successful. So thank you all for doing that anti-violence movement. Saturday, the mayor already made the proclamation for the Family Fun Day for Autism. Please come out and support. I plan to make that as well on Saturday. And the other thing on Saturday, the Flame of Eternal Peace for survivors of genocide at Lutern University, the Spirit Chapel at 3:00 PM. If you're not aware of the story, come and learn the story of the genocide and what happened over in South Africa. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's it?
Appreciate it. Mr. Manley?
Yeah, two things. First of all, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Ms. Ishihara tonight.
Second in favor, say aye. Opposed motion passes.
And then she asked me to make an announcement for, on her behalf, about an upcoming event sponsored by Xanta. So I'd like to read that, and there's a slide up here that publicizes it. Do you know that sex trafficking happening, happens in our community and many communities like ours around the United States? What can you do to help put a stop to it? Well, Thursday, April 16th, the Xanta Club of Longview is honored to have Dr. Claire Renzetti present a program about the warning signs of sex trafficking and its effects on our community. This is a free event. It'll take place at 7:00 PM at Longview High School's Mickey Melton Theater. Please join in.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir.
Do you see that picture of you at that animal?
You mean that big bald-headed guy standing over the side?
You see that?
Yeah. Look like I'm a regular Cajun, don't I?
You could see some of them behind you.
Yeah.
We were, we were on Jackson Square and had some guy from South Africa that made this, it's a type of harp out of one of those big gourds people make birdhouses out of, that thing. I bought, Sidney, a tape, and the tape didn't work.
I did get it to work. No, I got it, I got, I don't know what...
I thought I got a bum deal.
No, it, it worked, it worked. I don't know, I may have had it upside down. I may have been putting it in as a DVD. I don't know.
You can't put it in your television, Sidney.
You can't? No. Well, that's why, that's why it wouldn't play then.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'd like to, second what Mr. Sims was talking about, this animal shelter's been something that we've all been interested in. It's something personally that, that I've been interested in. My wife has volunteered several years out the old shelter, and we're just very anxious and looking forward, Mr. Sims, to the culmination of many years of your work and your encouragement and putting this together and, and having something that we can be proud of and something that we'll work in the future to see if we can't get it to financially pay for itself.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, Saturday, April 11th, I think, okay, this is noon, 8:00 AM to noon, I was getting ready to say you've already covered this, but I don't think you have. Lear Park, City of Longview and Keep Longview Beautiful will hope, will host Longview Green and Clean. The Green of Longview Green and Clean is giving the community a chance to recycle junk and other items that usually go to the landfill. I've got an old piano on my front porch. I'll be happy if somebody can figure out how to get it out of there and come get it.
Yeah.
Cost me a new floor in my house. Yeah, anyway. Because one of my children thought it was such a good deal, and they rolled it in on my house, and those old upright pianos are very happy, and it put dents in it anyway. So I got a real good deal. The clean part is a community-wide effort of volunteers that will work together to clean litter and beautify the areas where they live, work, or worship. For more information about the recycling activities, call 903-237-1250. To register for litter collection, email klb@longviewtech.gov. Saturday, April 11th, Longview Public Library invites you and your family to enjoy a day of exploration, entertainment, and learning as part of the Chautauqua Festival. The event takes place from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. For more information, contact the library at 237-1350. You know, they must think I can't pronounce those kind of words. That is a Louisiana word. Yeah, they, they put these parentheses of how to say it. And I got places like, I got places like Chopatulus and all that stuff. So anyway, thank you all for doing that. I appreciate that. The mayor's town hall meeting, let me not read this. What, what I had planned to do is sort of a going away, you know, I started in Spring Hill. Spring Hill was my district and kind of where I started my city council career, and was planning to just, just have a little reception get-together up at the school, not knowing at the time that the city was already preparing a reception for the three of us, these fine gentlemen pictured right here. So there was no sense in having a separate, you know, reception. It was called a town hall, but it was more of a reception. So I've decided that that's not necessary. We're just going to have a reception at City Hall Thursday, April 23rd, from 3:00 to 5:00, recognize serving the services of retiring council members, John Sims, Gary Smith, and myself. We want to invite all the public to please come out. And I would hope the same friends of ours up at Spring Hill would come and people from your districts as well, but we won't invite the public to please come out. City of Longview election for mayor, District 1, 2, and 5, to be held Saturday, May 9th. Early voting begins April 27th. All early voting will take place at City Hall. Election day voting will take place within each district. For more information, contact the city secretary's office, 903-237-1080, or visit longviewtech.gov. And I want to say to the Longview News Journal, they, they did a good editorial day about, you know, it's important, it's really a shame, but city elections receive the smallest number or percent of voter turnout compared to federal, state, and county. And, and I think they did a great job of, you know, telling people how easy it is to go register to vote. So hopefully, we'll have a, a good turnout May 9th. That's all that I have. Mr. City Manager?
I don't have anything, sir.
Nothing?
I forgot about the rodeo bathrooms.
Oh, the rodeo bathrooms?
Yeah.
Oh, we had a, we had a, an official ribbon flushing this morning, complete with toilet paper as the ribbon, celebrating the million-dollar, I think it was, addition of restrooms out at the rodeo ground. For a number of years, the various people using it, whether it's Dalton Day or the Harvest Festival, the Longview Greckton Rodeo there, and we had rows of porta-potties. And it was just atrocious. And, and anybody has visited those, it's not a, typically not a great experience. So I'm, I'm proud to say that we have a state-of-the-art collection facility at our new, at our new, at our new rodeo ground. And we also have a new pavilion that has a large fan. I won't say what it's called. But there is a brand name of this fan we've been talking about ever since the discussion about building an event center happened. And, and so we have one of those big A fans that are in there, a brand name, of course. But beautiful facilities, you know, I want to thank everybody involved with that that did a great job.[1729.37]